Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the March nineteenth organize case meeting. As we call this meeting to order, I would ask if you plan to do a public comment this evening to commemorate her to Mrs. Callard at this time, if you haven't already done so. I would ask everyone to silence their cell phones and remove their hats as we stand for the final reading.
Let's do this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we do the middle call, please, Mrs. Callard? Amy?
Present.
Hanson?
Present.
Montague?
Present.
Murphy?
Present.
O'Donnell?
Present.
Ramberg?
Present.
And Long?
Present.
Any motion to knock the agenda as presented?
The move.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye?
Opposed?
Motion carries. All right, first this evening, as always, are our reports, and we will start with our student board reps. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. So, just to start with the high school, so last week, the senior, or last week, or we, I think it was last week, the seniors started their senior exits, and then I'm pretty sure everyone did actually end up wrapping it up today. There might be like a few people who maybe weren't able to do it or something that just had to finish those up. And then actually four seniors, including myself, so there was Ella Kenyon, Isabelle, and Deshko Joseph, and myself, we were able to actually go down to the middle school and present our presentations for two EDP classes. So we got to present to them and then kind of talk to them about high school and give them any advice we could. And surprisingly, they were like very interested in it too, I mean, because they just kept asking questions, and I saw Riley too. And so they were just asking questions about middle school, about what we liked about it, what we thought the hardest years were, easiest years, and we can kind of get them just for the next year to be able to feel more confident. So that was really great. We got to see some teachers as well. And then last Wednesday, I attended the three district board meeting, and I was able to collaborate with some fellow board reps while they were there, and we actually have been talking lately, either as a group or I've been individually speaking with two of them, Fenton's Hannah Lee Everly, and then Lake Fenton's Alexa Murray, I think that's her last name. So we have all been kind of talking about some things, like ideas for all of us, like they gave me some great ideas. I know that I'm going to talk with Mr. Siselski when we meet and stuff about some new things that we can do, because, I mean, I know as student reps or here, you know, like, just like kind of give out information, but we just really, really want to get more of the kids involved too. So we're going to do that, and then some ideas too, I have some here. Again, a lot to talk with Mr. Siselski about, so we're going to try and do, yeah, sorry, you ready? We have like a lot of Google forms we kind of want to put out for, I won't like go into much details, but I know like there's some for what they want us to tell you instead of just talking to specific people that we know or just talking to specific kids at each school. So kind of put out, we're going to probably put them out at the middle school and high school, not really the elementary. And then also on top of that, Lake Fenton actually has like two little committees that they have made with the middle school, or no, they kind of just use student council for the middle school, which I had done in the past, but I know that, I don't remember who the teacher was, I think I needed to talk with her a little bit more about it. And then at the high school, but kind of asking the student council if any of them want to be involved, but then also getting kids involved that I know are, I would say, leaders within the school, just to talk like once a month about what we can bring to you guys. And then just about sports, everything has kind of started. Even scrimmages and games have already begun, and it's like we're a week, and I know Girls Across has a game today. I know Boys Across had a scrimmage, I believe. And then girls softball has a scrimmage today as well. And then Girls Across have a game Friday against the originally Fenton team. Then the girls soccer has a new coach, and that is potentially the coach as well for the boys soccer team. And then the track long distance coach, used to be the end long distance coach, and now he is our track distance coach.
Prom tickets are now being sold at both lunches. And to get a ticket, a student must have their equal time assignments done, fees and fines paid, and no discipline grades or absence issues that haven't been cleared by Mr. Justie or Mr. Gates. A guest pass needs to be filled out and signed if a student is bringing someone from outside of LHS. And bring out any purchase ticket, and from now until spring break, tickets are fifty-five dollars. Then April seventh through eleventh, they're sixty-five dollars, and then the following week they're seventy-five dollars. Any questions can be addressed by Mr. Day, Mrs. Blunkett, and LA Abram. And additionally, all students are looking forward to coming back from spring break for state testing. Monday, April seventh is PS eighty-nine, Tuesday is PS eighty-ten for juniors. Wednesday is their SA two essay, Thursday is ACT two workies, and Friday is that stuff. And this past Wednesday, our quiz bowl team became Central Metro League champs. They're headed to state finals on April twelfth at U of M in Harvard.
Okay, for the middle school, it's just going to be a reminder of kind of everything I told you guys about the previous meeting, so that the Craig Turner Quiz eighth grade little like life lessons hair contest thing, that is March twenty-sixth at eight. So this is eight AM, of course. So all this will be happening like the week, obviously, before spring break, you know, just kind of leading up to that fun week. I think kind of all schools like to do that. Then the Spring into Wellness Day is March twenty-eighth. So again, just the different events that they set up at the multipurpose building for, like, there's like yoga, and so it's kind of just like mental, and like, it's like a health assembly. So there's a professional stock juggler. And then again, the third round class meetings after, or after spring break, and then some, and then again, just the, some EDP classes had the seniors come in and talk.
Last Wednesday, Central held their Shamrock Shuffle. It was very successful, and lots of kids attended. They particularly enjoyed the games, where if you won a game, you received a ticket to be put into a raffle, and then you could win the prize baskets. And many society for fourth graders is this Friday. In learning their concepts of business, students have made goods to sell or will provide a service to others in their cafeteria. The exchange will occur through money that they've earned in jobs previously assigned to them.
For Linden Elementary, so I was actually able to talk with them until the kindergarteners today at recess, which probably wasn't the best time to talk to them, because they're having a lot of fun. Actually, they all kept asking me to hold their hand, it was really sweet. And now, I was like, I don't hold all their hands, but I have to. So I just, I couldn't work chicken, but the point. So I was able to talk to them about what they love about March's Reading Month. And so Eloise said that she loves to read in class with her friends and her teachers. Harper said that she loves to read in class as well. Vio Love said she loves to read, but only, I don't know, she doesn't, she said she doesn't only do it in school, just on her own. And then, I can't answer. Myla, she said that she just likes to say "are" together in the time, so I was like, yeah, so I was like, okay, I was like, me too. And then there's a stuff-
They changed the pirate presentation, I think.
Did they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably why.
Oh, that would make sense, yeah. So there's a special assembly to highlight positive behavior, which I think is absolutely great, because, you know, of course I'll get them super excited. And then they're continuing to have weekly drawings to reward students for completing their book logs, which is looking good, because it definitely motivates them. Weekly pirate themed spirit days, I went throughout the school, and oh my gosh, she was like, and I even questioned for my sticker. It was like, we are readers, and then, so for the visiting stickers. And then, so they're looking forward to the bi raffle on March twenty-eighth to reward students who fulfilled their reading expectations for March reading month, and then again, sponsored by the Mason's Group in Linden.
At Hyatt, students are having fun with the reading month spirit activities. That seems to be on all the elementary schools. The dress is your favorite book character day is this Friday, which is always very popular amongst the children. And their spring flower fundraiser is wrapping up soon, and the money raised will support future field trips and assemblies. And also, the school is busy probably building for upcoming bond projects that will begin to take place over spring break.
And then with Argentine, I believe it's tomorrow, the STEM Famine night, twentieth? Oh, that's what it said on my thing. I guess not, was that last week or something?
No, it's January twenty-fourth.
Oh, it's an ankle now. So that's all, that's all I have for you, Miss Y.
Oh, wait, sorry, more.
So sorry. Again, any NHS opportunities, Mrs. Chow, so we're celebrating, they're out.
On that note, concession stand won't open until after spring break, but I know for at least all the Boys Across games, you could probably, like, make the last parents really happy if you volunteered, or you all volunteer versus us all volunteering. So that's an opportunity there. It would be, JV starts at five thirty, varsity at seven, so you could get like four hours in the evening on any of those game nights if you're interested.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you both for so much information. I really enjoy and appreciate hearing these updates on all the buildings. It really does help when we don't have kiddos of our own in all of these spots anymore to know what's going on in the buildings. And so I think it's really great that you guys do that and also make it fun by asking them. I was waiting, Lizzie, to see if any of the kids reported that they liked their reading logs.
Uh, no, no one did.
That wasn't reported.
Well, I kept asking, I said, what do you like about reading?
But they could put advice, so that's good.
Oh, yeah, I know, exactly. But they could have just answered, like, I like to play with my Barbies. Like, I was like, what about reading? They're like, play on the playground.
That's cute. Well, thank you both for the efforts that you made to go up in the air to get information from students all across the district. I love the idea of the Google form as well. I think that's a great way to get feedback, even if it's just sent to us and, you know, filtered and sent to us. Because there's a lot of students, I think they have really great ideas, but they, you know, don't have the right avenue to share with us, or, you know, don't want to come and speak at a board meeting, which is understandable. So I like the idea of giving students other ways to provide feedback as well, so that's good. All right, so up next is Mr. Siselski and his superintendent report.
Thank you, welcome everybody this evening. I do have a couple things to report out on. The Genesee County Association of School Board Members Annual CBA Award Scholarship Ceremony Dinner is scheduled for Thursday, April twenty-four. The event will be hosted at the GCI Conference Center, and the reception is five thirty to six. Dinner at six, and the award presentation starting at approximately seven PM. I would like to take a minute to congratulate our very own Brooke Hanson, who will be recognized for her CBA accomplishments this year, so congratulations. Board members, if you are interested, please contact Mrs. Callard. Linden Middle School's Spring into Wellness Event, Friday, March twenty-eighth. Linden Middle School will hold its first ever Spring into Wellness Day for students and staff. The event is intended to bring awareness of self-wellness mentally and physically. Different wellness stations include yoga, mindfulness, Movement Matters, hygiene, CPR, and AED. And then this morning, I attended the thirtieth annual Children's Champion Breakfast with Linden High School Principal Derek Jowinski. We were joined by seniors Addison Goss and Blaze Goody. Both were nominated as outstanding students for Linden High School. Blaze and Addison were both recipients of the two thousand twenty-five Love Light Crest Scholarship, which was a thousand dollar scholarship. And Addison was awarded the two thousand twenty-five Outstanding Youth Award and the Guy Linda Moxon Scholarship. So congratulations to Addison and Blaze, and that was all of, all of the students in Genesee County that were nominated. So, and then finally, Linden Community Schools will begin spring break at the end of the school day on March twenty-eighth. Students and staff will return to class on Monday, April seventh. So on behalf of Linden Community Schools, I'd like to wish everyone a safe and enjoyable spring break.
All right. Thank you, Russ. Are there any board members to report this evening? Mrs. O'Dell?
Yeah, I was just going to share that Tabitha and I both attended the district, the three district board meeting as well. It was really informative, it was nice, because it's informal, we had the opportunity to ask any questions for clarification on how things work between the three districts. So just mostly informative, but really great to do.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else to report this evening? Mr. Hayne? Oh, oh. Or Jerry, all right.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Luck. Last week, I was able to attend the Genesee County Association of School Board Members Scholarship voting, and there were twenty-one applicants, a lot of really great applicants. And probably makes sense, but we were not able to vote for our old school, our own school in the first round, and unfortunately, we did not have a winner this year, but the winners were Bendel, Clive, Fenton, Flushing, Goodrich, and Lake Fenton. So that was good, and then they will be honored at the dinner that Mr. Siselski mentioned. And then tomorrow, I'll be attending, I believe with Ms. Hanson, the regular Genesee County Association of School Board Members Meeting. They're going to have a focus on new board members. I don't believe Ms. O'Dell can make it, but Ms. Ramberg is going to try to make it, so we'll see how that goes, it's all I have, thanks.
All right, very good, thank you. Anyone else? No, okay, just a couple things that I wanted to mention. I was just going to wish everybody a happy spring break as well. Also, I had the opportunity to attend, just personally, the middle school choir concert last week, and I wanted to give a little shout out to Mr. Ray Mill and Mr. Bennett. It was a middle school and high school choir concert. It was really nice. I don't, I don't know like how we know these things are always going on, other than just keeping a really close eye on the calendar, but it was like thirty minutes in total, and the kids had a good time, they made some really nice music. I just thought it was a really nice event to attend. My daughter was a part of it, which is why I knew about it. But I was like, gosh, this is like just really nice, it would be nice if more community probably knew to come to that, because it was, I don't know, it was just like a good promotion for high school choir as well, so it was a really nice thing. And then on April ninth, just a reminder to the full board, Mr. Montague and Mr. Siselski are anywhere, but I will not be at the April ninth board meeting, so Mr. Montague will be leading that meeting, thank you very much. And I think that was all I had, so. All right, we'll keep moving then. I think I've written a little feedback from the month's tonight, it's kind of like throwing up. There are no special presentations or recognitions tonight. There are no formal administrative updates this evening, so that takes us to the part of our meeting for public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? We do, just one, Sherry Hittin, and Tabitha.
Well, just to piggyback on your scholarships, this came through my work, if you want to hand it out. There's seven or eight there.
Okay.
Just like twenty-five hundred dollars for anybody that qualifies. I figured I'd throw that in there. It came across my email this morning.
Yeah, thank you.
The only thing I really wanted to talk about is school bus safety. In the last month, I've had four vehicles run past, the bus stopped at my driveway, four times. The last time, the drivers that were behind the bus kindly let me on my driveway, and I got the plate number. Because I'm, I'm, the, a bus has clearly stopped, doors open, lights are on, they just are, just forty-five miles an hour just driving through. But I caught up to the vehicle in Linden, of all places, from Argentine. There was nobody, there was no safety issues there, just, I got a picture of the plate, and I called your bus garage to tell them the information, because I'm, I'm actually tired, and I'm not the only one. I'm on the Linden parent page, and everyone says they have issues with people running their bus stops. So I don't know, but I do know that there was a law, a house bill that was put in, house bill, I think, forty-two oh two and forty-two oh four, that allows school buses to be equipped with stop art cameras, and that I think you can get grants or some type of funding from like Esser or whatever, that when those lights are on, there's a camera that can, the bus driver, because the bus driver's wailing on her horn, I'm in my driveway with my vehicle, and I'm wailing on my horn, and they just keep on driving. They don't even stop. And it's just a safety issue, it's not just my, I just hear from all kinds of parents that are further down Silver Lake Road. It's a very busy road, it's very high speed, people coming from Byron, there's no stops, I mean, there, there's just no control there. I did talk to the police department and let them know about it too, and sent them the information, but I never got a call back from the bus garage, but I assume they probably did. I just wanted them to be reported, because I, I just got, this is the only one that I was able to actually get a plate number, I have a picture of the vehicle. But it's a safety issue, so I don't know if maybe you can look into getting stop art cameras. I mean, I know we don't have a lot of buses, but you might be able to get some grants or use some extra money or something. I'm just saying, it's a safety issue.
And they didn't get your message?
They did?
Yeah, oh yeah, I talked cheap, cheap only about it.
Yeah, I, I just, this is the first time I was able to, those people that were behind the bus knew I was pissed, because, excuse my language, but they, they knew, because the bus driver was just wailing and wailing and wailing on her horn, and these people just don't care. And it's all different types of vehicles, young people, old people, they just don't stop, so it's just a safety issue. So I thought, you know, this bill, you can collect money and fines, just so you know.
All right, thank you. Any public comments? All right, we will move along to the consent agenda this evening, which includes minutes from our work session meeting on March fifth, and voices for the month of February, and a personnel summary sheet. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
It's been moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported, all those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have a couple of action items this evening. The first item is our Hyatt Elementary, Central Elementary asbestos abatement contracts. So I know everybody has hopefully had the opportunity to review the information. In fact, Mr. Baddas is at the podium with lots of paper, I guess that means I'll turn it over to him to take a look, or to give us any more information here in a minute. But hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look through the information that was presented ahead of time. Because this is an action item this evening, we do need a motion in support before we have any discussion out of. Do I have a motion?
It's been moved.
Now, supported. So the motion in support is to approve the Hyatt Elementary and Central Elementary asbestos abatement contract as presented, so, Mr. Baddas.
I don't have a lot to add in addition to the report that I put together. Just the fact that over spring break, we do intend to start some of this work. We've actually prepped some areas at Hyatt and Central Elementary School. Really to get a head start, like I talked to the board a couple months ago, some of this caught us off guard, and we did some of the testing under the flooring. This, primarily what this is related to, it's the glue that's under the carpeting that used to hold the mastic, that was the mastic for the PCT, and it kind of got drawn back out of the concrete, and so went on a carpet mastic, and because of that, we have to do abatement. The primary areas are really at Central. That entire building, pretty much wall to wall, is, has the same situation. We did test cuts just as confirmatory, and did find that it is throughout, other than, it appears to be the media center. For whatever reason, the media center looks like it had been ground back in two thousand and four when we did the rest of the work. The glue at Hyatt, primarily, other than eight classrooms, came back negative, which is a great thing. But we had eight classrooms, the computer lab, and then we're doing some abatement of pipe wrap, pipe insulation. These areas where we're doing mechanical work at Hyatt, that work is also planned for spring. So we have four classrooms, a computer lab, and pipe wrap that we're doing at Hyatt over spring break. It's, you're kind of limited in what we can do, because after you do the abatement, you don't have to air sampling and testing, send those in, get clearances, those tests, those tests go out of state. So we didn't pick off more than we know we can get done, so we can have that building ready to go, or both buildings ready to go as we return from spring break. After the spring work, spring break work, we have some over late spring work. We're doing a couple of classrooms at Central Elementary School, the art room and the music room. Both of those, as we wind down towards the end of the year, they determined that they could take those programs and put them on a cart, or they didn't have a lot going on in those, so we're going to go in and do the abatement in the art room and the music room at Central. Again, to try to pull ahead as much of this work before we get into summer construction as we can. Beyond that, we're looking at potentially doing two additional rooms before summer starts at Central. If we can work that out, if we can shuffle people from two classrooms into two rooms that we're abating over spring break, or late spring, that we'll do that. If not, then we'll just have to take rest of the office and get into the summer. So we bid it out, we have six contractors that walked the project. We ultimately had three that did the project. I think I provided all of the bid documents, or the bid tabulation. We're recommending that these two different contractors, BDS is going to do the work at Central Elementary School, and Sloan Environmental will do the work at Hyatt Elementary School. Sloan is a company that we used last year at the high school. Performance Well, BDS is a company that we've worked with for many years on smaller projects and things. They did do a test for us in room eighteen at Central. That's a room that we're doing, that's getting converted into the new office. We wanted to see what it looked like, and to truly identify what the process was going to, you know, need to be to hit that mastic off the floor. So room eighteen has already been completed, and that's really to allow us to start some of that construction, heavy construction over spring break as well. So those two companies are who we're recommending. There was an alternate that was in here and kind of slashed it out, that was basically for that media center. We had that in our, in our scope, when we did some of that confirmatory testing and sampling, it appears again that that area is clean. Again, we went into the middle of the room, did some test cuts through the carpeting to see, and it appears to be the same as what we see on the edges, so we're hopeful that that is unnecessary, that would appear to be the case. So the numbers that I did knew what we expected the project to consist of unless we, you know, we find something that's unexpected, which could potentially happen as we get further into construction, because we have some hardwood ceilings, drywall, and things like that that we have to remove, and, you know, because of bathroom renovations, there could be some stuff that we uncovered. But if that happens, we'll deal with it as we get there, but we have unit pricing for a lot of the stuff that we've been out, so. Will I answer any questions that we might have?
All right, thanks. Anybody have any questions or comments? Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Luck, thank you, Mr. Baddas. The bond dollars are planned for this activity? And was this in line with what you projected, as far as bond dollars go?
Uh, no, we had, we had asbestos abatement in the bond program. The dollars weren't to this extent. The revolving items in there, I think between the two was around a hundred thousand dollars. And most of that was really anticipated to be for pipe wrap and those things that may be hidden additions as we went through, knowing that we had already done this abatement in two thousand and four. So this was unexpected, so this is an additional amount to what we probably would have expected it to be. But as I talked at the last meeting, the reserves that we have at this point are above three million dollars, so.
So this is two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of new money, I guess.
Correct, that's correct.
What's it going to take to make sure we save the sixteen thousand four hundred and get everything done at Central this year, and not have to dwindle into twenty-six?
So some of the-
Sixteen thousand dollars four hundred.
Right. Some of the spring work that we're doing now, spring break work, and those two additional rooms that we're talking, room two, room three, and room four, that we want to move into the art and music room after we have those completed. We feel, we had a meeting last week, we had the abatement contractor actually in here with our environmentalists and art panel on Monday. We walked in, we put together a pretty solid plan that allows our construction people enough area at Central to work as we're doing abatement work in other areas of the building. So we basically have a five-phase plan. Five phases though that occurred really in only a matter of about fourteen total days at Central, so these guys will be working simultaneously with the other contractors. The one advantage we have at Central is the ceilings in the classrooms were replaced only a few years ago, so we're taking off lighting, we're doing electrical work for technology for lighting and some systems and those kinds of things. So it's not as invasive in the classrooms, the construction side, which helps a little bit, but it's going to be tight getting it done, but the intent is, after our meeting on Monday, that we are going forward to help with doing the entire building. We have a backup plan to basically take nine classrooms at Central and not do the renovation work or the abatement work until next summer. I think we're beyond that, and the plan at this point is to do all of it this summer and get the building done.
That would be great, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? Okay, it's been moved and supported to approve the Hyatt Elementary and Central Elementary asbestos abatement contracts as presented. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, up next is our Linden Community Schools Unified Activities Club. Again, we have had some information presented to us on this, which is pretty awesome. It is the administrative recommendation to approve the Linden Community Schools Unified Activities Club as presented. Do I have a motion?
It's been moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported to approve the LMS Unified Activities Club as presented. Are there questions on this or comments? Mrs. Ramberg?
Hi, I'm pretty excited about this for the special education. I have those students be able to participate in activities that they normally would not be able to. I know that when I was talking to residents before I became a board member, that is something that a lot of parents wanted to have. When I was looking at some of them, I was just going to be new. Is there a possibility for the students to either use Hartman School or Fenton School in one of these options?
When you talk about swimming, that's a whole nother novel, because of liability and things. Actually, our students do have the-
Actually, our students do have the opportunity during the day to go to Fenton with the adaptive PE schedule that they're on. And they actually use the pool, they swim. So our high school students are getting that opportunity. As far as competing and things like that, no, swimming is not on the agenda as part of the unified activities, not in a competitive nature.
All right, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, the cost of the program is just basically a one percent stipend?
From the district standpoint, yes, as you saw there. The GIST offers a grant through PAC, which is the Parents' Action Committee, thank you, which every district, including ours, currently obviously is our representative. And they offer two thousand dollars a school. So we've had it the last two years, and I keep pointing to Lance because he's been a big advocate in in pursuing this and even pushing it forward the last few years. And when they went to the meeting this year, we were the only school applying. So they said, hey, why don't you let us move for all three, all three dollars? And they said, great. So we we're going to have the funds, the six thousand dollars in grant money for above and beyond. So that we don't really have to fundraise. We can buy uniforms. We can do the pay for the bowling, the transportation.
So the intent is our budget to pay the one percent and use the grant money for other particulars?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, okay. I was just going to ask you, what was the cost of the one percent? What was that amount?
I I don't know that. Some of it is as we go. I know for the month of April, I believe they're going to do bowling or, yeah. So that's the plan for April, to kind of roll it out. And then, once we get the supervisor on board, you know, even at the lower levels, just some activities. One thing I know they talked about is just having time at the multipurpose center. We can lower the lights, have some sensor, sensory type activities going on for students to just relax and have fun.
So exactly, how many sponsors do you anticipate having as far as qualifying for the one percent stipend?
Right now, we're focused on one.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, it is. It is part of the LEA contract, the one percent. Yeah, we're we're looking at one sponsor right now.
Are you interested in in addressing the second paragraph about the board policy in the head guideline?
Sure. Yeah, and again, I have it here for the board, just to be, the board to be aware. When we looked at Board Policy twenty-four thirty and the head guideline twenty-four thirty, in my opinion, there was some interpretation. I believe in the in the policy, it indicates, I did not write. It basically indicated that-
The policy says they're being administered by the-
Thank you.
And then the administrative guidelines said to take it to the board.
Yeah, but the board policy also said if it's non-curricular, superintendent has approval. And so, and the guideline says the board has approval. And so what we're looking to do is basically change superintendent approval to board approval. Yeah, it was just an interpretation. And in my opinion, there was some, there was some, it it just contradicted each other. So we did, Michelle and I did, Ms. Callahan and I did communicate a little bit with Neola. And basically, we felt if we changed superintendent to board in the policy, then everything should be aligned.
Good to me. So that's going to be a separate-
That's separate.
Different down the road.
Yes.
All right, any other questions or comments regarding the Unified Activities Club? All right, I just think it's awesome. Thank you, Mr. Leal, for always supporting this as well, and all the other folks in the district that do support these activities. They're always fun to see. I'm glad that all these students are going to have the opportunity to do bowling and other activities, thanks to some of the grant funding and just having a club. So I I'm sure I speak, I'm going to have to point the whole board, that this is an amazing opportunity for our students. So thank you very much. All right, it's been moved and supported to approve the Linden Community Schools Unified Activities Club as presented. All those in favor? Aye. Post. Motion carries. All right, we have a couple, our next couple of action items are regarding some MASB training. Ms. Tabitha Ramberg would like to attend the MASB Behind the Scenes at the Capitol for the Spring twenty twenty-five, which is in May. And so it is the administrative recommendation to approve Tabitha Ramberg's attendance at the MASB Behind the Scenes at the Capitol on May seventh. Do I have a motion?
It's been moved.
Yeah, okay. Sure, supported. So a motion in support to approve Tabitha Ramberg's attendance at MASB Behind the Scenes at the Capitol on May seventh. Are there any comments or questions about this? Yeah, I guess my only comment would be thank you for attending, and we look forward to hearing what you have to bring back from that.
Yeah, if you guys approve it, that'd be awesome. I just want to kind of see what they're doing, they go to the legislation, and what they're advocating for. And I think it'd be good to bring everything back to the board members.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. All right, there's been a motion in support. All those in favor? Aye. Post. Motion carries. All right, up next, Ms. Burke Hansen would like to attend the MASB Spring Institute on May second through fourth, and the MASB Behind the Scenes at the Capitol on May seventh. Ms. Hansen is actually presenting at one of the workshops on one of those days. So part of that fee will be covered by MASB, including her hotel stay. So that will be a savings to the district as well. So it is the administrative recommendation to approve Ms. Hansen's attendance at the MASB Spring Institute and the MASB Behind the Scenes at the Capitol. Do I have a motion?
It's been moved. Support.
All right, and so there's been a motion in support. Any questions or comments? Yes, straight ahead.
What are you presenting on?
The workshop theme is AI this year. It's one of my day job. I use some work in AI. So the presentation will be on like the hidden sides of AI, like environmental concerns and ethical concerns. And I'll do that with a colleague of mine.
All right, cool.
Yeah, I think it's cool too. I mean, it's not only for you to attend, but to present at these conferences, that's huge. Not only for you personally, but for our district to have that representation. So thank you for taking the time to do that. Awesome. So, any other comments or questions?
All right, so there's a motion in support to approve Burke Hansen's attendance at the MASB Spring Institute and MASB Behind the Scenes at the Capitol. All those in favor? Aye. Post. Motion carries. All right, we have a couple of discussion items this evening. The first up being the GIST Annual Budget Hearing Delegate and Alternate Representative Designation Form. And so the annual GIST budget hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, May thirtieth. The hearing will begin at five o'clock and be hosted at the Innovation Zone at the Genesee Career Institute. The board needs to designate a delegate and alternate to represent Linden Community Schools at the annual budget hearing. We have to, it's good for us to chat about this tonight so that we can vote on it at the next meeting. And then it has to be submitted by April eleventh to GIST last year. Mr. Murphy was the delegate. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. And I was the alternate. And thanks to Mr. Murphy's attendance, I didn't even do anything. So thank you again. So if anyone is interested in that, I don't know, Mr. Murphy, if you have any comments on that. If you're interested, obviously, you get first dibs. But if not, if you want to share, if you want to share with people what the job entails, maybe that would help.
It's actually kind of listening to all the different sections of the budget get presented. And there is an opportunity to ask some questions that are kind of pointed. So I think it's a good learning experience, and I think you can have an impact on the the GIST through your attendance. So I would encourage people to take a shot at it.
All right, is anybody interested in being the designated representative for our district or alternate? We do get information in advance, right? I remember we get like a book in advance. So you have time to like look through. It's not like you're just caught off guard and what's happening that night. And then it's fairly, I think, basic on, I I attended one before as well. And they kind of go through everything and just ask if people have questions, and then like the delegates vote to approve the budget. It's, I think Mr. Remann, you've presented before as well. So it's it's not anything you have to be super planned for, but if anybody's interested. Oh, thanks, Mr. Maney. We've impacted you and dropped straws. Okay, so Mr. Maney has volunteered.
I'll be the delegate if-
You'll be the alternate? Thanks. Thanks, guys. Then just jump right in. Okay, very good. Well, if anyone has time to think about it after the meeting and is like, wow, I'd really love to do that. I'm sure that neither one of the gentlemen there would be opposed to letting you take a spot. But thank you to Mr. Maney and Mr. Murphy for volunteering to be the delegate and alternate at that meeting on the third day. All right, so our last discussion item this evening is on the early childhood planning. Mr. Zaselski has sent us recommendations, some updated information on things happening with Argentine and the early childhood program. And so I know everybody's had a chance to kind of look through that and ask some questions. But Mr. Zaselski, before we get into any discussion, I'll just turn it over to you to share with everyone, and then we can go with the next.
Thank you. Yeah, just a follow-up. We originally had some discussions back, I believe, on February fifth. So just follow up on some information as we continue to move forward. And again, this is just some some quick information on on the building itself. And again, why are we going through this? Well, there's the the movement with the free preschool for all four-year-olds, part of Governor Whitmer's plan to implement. And again, the hundred percent equals seventy-five percent of four-year-olds by the time that the governor has done with their current term. And it all runs through the GSRP, great start writing this program. It is state-funded. And but there are some some income caps, and we'll talk about that and as we talked back in February as well. It's also part of our bond program, something we talked about even during the initial parts of our bond and prior to the vote, is part of our process. And we'll get some of that later on too. It is about growth, looking to hopefully grow the program. We've seen some great results. Students that attend our early childhood program, again, I don't have that. It's all perception. But I think our teachers, to our parents, even some of the the survey results, people that attend, that have attended Argentine early childhood programs, as they continue through level of kindergarten, first grade, second grade, on the way out to graduation, we see some tremendous growth and great progress. It is about our vision. It is about our vision, our strategic plan about learning, creating, and exceeding. And we are transitioning August of twenty-five, targeting August of twenty-five for that transition from our early head, early head, uh, early childhood program at Argentine to transition when construction is finally completed and we get the all-keeper down at Hyatt. So again, numbers that we showed last night, just to kind of give you an idea of where our numbers currently set with our four-year-old GSRP program over the last three years. Our kindergarten young five mix, kind of where those, you see a little bit of a trend difference in in true kindergartners versus young fives. And then again, our number of Eagle Club students, and again, that's part of our before and after-school care that we offer right now. So one of the questions that came up with GSRP, how are slots determined? So really, there's maybe three components to it. First is the state level. The state determines based on their state budget, how many GSRP slots they're going to have statewide. And I couldn't give you that number, okay? Then it goes down to the county level. And so the county submits that information, their information to the state for slots through GSRP. And basically, the county looks at eligible four-year-olds through their population census. How many children were served the previous year? How many are served in Head Start? And the requests from other ISDs within the state. Okay, and again, that information gets funneled to the state to determine the slots for the county. And then the counties, once they get that okay, they pass that on to the local districts. So Genesee County gets their numbers, they pass it on to us. And then we determine, again, based on previous allocations, what we want to request, whether it be for part day, full day, or extended date, or extended care. First grade students at family poverty level. Why first grade? Why does that matter? Kindergarten isn't required in the state of Michigan. So you use the numbers that are required according to the state. So they look at first grade numbers. How they come up with the data on federal poverty levels, I cannot tell you that. I don't know that, okay? But they look at that, and they kind of use that, as we talked about, at four hundred percent. So if you're four hundred percent above the federal poverty line, you qualify for GSRP. So that's how they start in determining the ISD, the county, and giving the local districts their GSRP numbers or slots. And then what we do as a local district, we have families apply for those slots. I'm going to jump ahead to this slide. I'll go back. So there's, you know, they they fill out enrollment information. They apply for five-nine-one kids. And again, how is that based once we get that information? It sits in a queue basically until May first. Is that correct? Till May first. So you apply with your student and your family information, all the information that's required, and it sits there till May first. Then there's a prioritization. So the first priority is is four-year-olds by September one. So you're put at the top of the list. And it looks at your family poverty level. And again, we talked a little bit about this at our last meeting, based on dates, and as you can see, the the May first. And so you start going through that process based on the students that are in the queue or have already enrolled. And then as slots fill, hopefully you fill them all. If you don't, you have open slots. Then you look at students that are in that age gap. So basically, four years old between September two and December one. And you kind of go through that same process. We also look at disability and developmental delays of the student, challenging behaviors, language, other than than English, excuse me, environmental risk, if there's any abuse or neglect, again, based on need. And then we go through with these different gates as slots are open. So as long as slots remain open, you can get up until September twenty-second. And if you're eight-hundred-one percent above the federal poverty level, as you notice, everything else is below. Okay, so once you get to September twenty-second, if the district has slots and there are students that qualify and are over eight-hundred percent, they can have free preschool. So kind of watch it through some of the processes that the state, the county, and individuals go, individual districts go through to determine GSRP slots and who fills them. Another question was where, what does it look like for the county? Well, here's the data. This is from twenty-four twenty-five GSRP. So you can see there's part-day slots, half-day, excuse me, full school day slots, and extended program. In Linden, we have forty-four part, forty-four, and with zero extended program. Why didn't we have extended program? Couple reasons. Number one, you've got to have a five-day program, so Monday through Friday. And it's got to match, or it's got to be at least a hundred and eighty school days, correct? Our GSRP runs a hundred and twenty. We have the five-day program, but we don't have the hundred, a hundred and eighty days. Okay, so again, conversations that even Mrs. McElravich has had with me, moving forward, if that's something we want to look at. So again, the other thing I noted in there, the state does require the county to partner. Thirty percent of their slots, they have to partner with non-scholes to have services available. So potentially, other type of childcare services that offer GSRP program. And again, there are some requirements there that have to be met. But again, the state requires the local counties to save thirty percent of those total slots, okay, for non-school services. And again, the funding, again, we talked about that last time around, just to give you an idea of where our total GSRP funding. And again, that's an approximate number. Okay, we get all that basically at the end of the year, well, I shouldn't say at the end of the year, monthly, from the ISD through the GSRP program. As in some cases, slots get filled. The last time, the last date they used to determine filled slots is Spring Cup Day, which was February twelfth, I believe. Okay, so any any students that come now would not qualify for this year for GSRP slots. So what we did is we actually moved it forward, after some of our discussion here at the board level. We sent out a survey, a community survey. We sent the first one out on February twenty-fourth. And again, it was about future programming, focused on early childhood. So again, through our system, our threshold system, we sent it out to all LCS families. A couple of different reminders. We also posted it on our district Facebook page. That's viewable to a lot of people. But again, it kind of tells you what we sent out and where we're at. In total, we had a hundred and sixty-eight responses. So looking at some of that survey data, again, how many children do people have in their household? Again, out of those results, fifty percent are showing about two. Again, something we've talked about over the years, even during our students in, students out. You know, people may not be having eight or nine children, maybe like they did forty or fifty years ago. So list the age ranges, and then this is really what we were hoping to get, some numbers. And this is kind of the focus area as far as that one, two, and three-year-olds. And again, part of the the questions, or one of the questions at the end was, would you like us to contact you? Leave your name and number. And we did get some responses there. And I know Mrs. McElravich is aware of that and taking care of some of that, going through this process to inform people about our program that we have with our early childhood. So again, kind of give you some numbers of the people that responded, the ages of their of their students. And out of that, how many of those students are enrolled or not? And out of that, how many of those students are enrolled or not enrolled? So again, with the three-year-olds that responded, primarily our three-year-old program, which is tuition-based that we have at, at Argentine right now. You know, we had just under ten that are enrolled and we had just over fifteen that were unenrolled. And then four-year-olds, you can see the majority of them were enrolled. We still had less than fifteen that took the survey that were unenrolled at the time. And so again, had you attended? Yeah, you know, a hundred people indicated they have attended our early childhood program in the past. And this is basically what they said about it, okay? I, much, a lot more responses, I just tried to consolidate it. But basically, it's a great program, we love the teachers, it's in our district, it's a great experience with other siblings that they've had. So they enrolled the younger ones in it, their students were able to make friends. They talked about the parents' teachers program and kind of kick-started it. And we've got Miss Akak to thank for that. Great teachers, great education, it was convenient, it was very positive. Being alumni, we felt living off of the best path of success. Locations, heard good things about the program, program's exceptional. So again, what I talked about earlier when we opened, we, we, we've got proof that our early childhood program is a success. So how important are the following factors? When people are considering early childhood programs or people that have enrolled? Location and program schedule were the top two. Okay, cost was right up there. And then transportation offered before and school after, before and after school childcare. So just give you some ideas of what our families are looking at in determining early childhood program. So then we did ask if they're enrolled somewhere else. And again, we had thirty-seven that answered yes, they had their child, or children enrolled in other early childhood programs other than what Linden offers. Why? And we asked that question. And again, didn't match the school calendar. Issues with the schedule, very similar. Open later than Argentine, meaning they wanted longer hours because they couldn't get their baby, or they'd work longer. They wanted a full five days a week. Some people kept their children in-home daycare. Healthy food choices, infant programming for parents at work. So again, just some reasons, individual reasons of why families may not choose or haven't chosen our early head, our early childhood program down at Argentine. So we did ask, what would you look for if your child was eligible? And again, just kind of gave some, some requirements there, plus before. And you can see the free pre-K through GSRP, five full days was the top choice. Just, I, oh, I think it was twenty-seven total. Okay, and then it went to the GSRP four, and then the half-days on down to the tuition base. So again, the people that did answer the survey are looking for that full day, five days a week for four-year-olds. So then this takes us kind of back to where we started in our last meeting, some of the areas that we felt we had to continue to talk about. As, you know, between Mrs. McElravich, Mr. Stricker, Mr. Vez, and myself, the logistics of how that transition would look once students, our early head, childhood programming was at Hyatt. So, and kudos to Vicki and John because they've, they've carried the bulk of the discussion and the bulk of logistics to get us in a very good spot in a short period of time. So yeah, they created a draft schedule that would work, that would work for classroom time, library time, gym time, eating time, computer time, recess time. They've created different maps of potential, what the cafeteria would look like because they have to do a different type of survey, almost family-style for GSRP requirements. So again, they, they kind of looked at all aspects to say, how would this work? And they've gone through that process. So they, again, created a draft schedule. Other things that we're looking at, obviously, the play together, learn together, that would still continue. That would still continue. And actually, this was the first year that as a district, we chose to fund that program. Prior to that, we received a grant through United Way. And I don't know if you guys remember last year, I think we talked about it, they pulled that grant line really from all of Genesee County, except for one school district. And they focused that back on educating in the Flint School District, which is their choice. We continue to run this program because of the results, because of the positive feedback we have been getting. And I can't remember the number, I think during the February fifth presentation, the amount of individuals that have attended already, it was well over a hundred. Do you remember the number up there?
I think it was eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, that have, have attended our Play Together, Learn Together. And again, these are for the infants with their families, and then it, it creates that connection. Not only with Argentine, but with Linden, the social, the emotional side, that peer group is starting to be created. They've had staff meetings, I don't bring spend down to Argentine. They've had staff tours at Hyatt to go through and kind of really start identifying what that transition would look like. And then once students get there, the daily schedules and stuff, including Eagle Club. Let's not forget about that. So with that being said, some of the things that have come out of that discussion, as well as what's come out of maybe some of the survey information, is the possibility of extending our hours for our early childhood. As you can see there, one of our draft schedules says seven AM open, five-thirty close. Well, maybe we look at six to six. And again, this is all draft, we're still going through some of it, but looking at those opportunities to help our families up. Maybe we just open Hyatt up or all of our elementaries, okay? For early drop-off. Now, why could we do that? You see it on the bottom. We're not gonna solve the traffic issue. We're not gonna solve it. Since COVID, a lot more families are bringing their students in their private vehicles. We're not gonna solve that problem. But are there ways that we can control that? One of those ways is potentially opening up our elementary buildings early. So the line of parents doesn't start at seven o'clock until the building opens at eight-twenty. So again, something we're looking at. The other thing that we are looking, that really, and probably planned that we will do, is open up additional parking areas. You can see on the picture, the, the areas in red are current structures within the Hyatt parking lot. We would remove those structures, including adding an outlet, and I, I know some people can't see, sorry, board, but we would add an exit. Oh, oh, I'm not tall enough, sorry. Yeah, I'm not sure what you're not doing. But we would add an, an exit that would, and once you drop your student off at Argentine, at their door, for example, you would continue going straight. And you would exit at the, be the northeast corner of the parking area into the bus loop, which will be a new bus loop. And again, that's a service drive, we're straightening up. And then there's more of the engineering drawings on the top. So again, is it gonna solve our problem? No, but it does give individuals another exit, so traffic could potentially flow faster. Because what's happening, people are going around the loop and then they're exiting. Well, that line is getting long because they're waiting for people to come in, to get in line, to drop their student off. So again, looking at ways to help solve problems that may not be solvable. Again, continue, adding additional staff for Eagle Club, use what we have. Maybe we look at, if we are gonna open up earlier, a state later, maybe we look at current staff members that we have at Hyatt or Linden up, whether it be parent pros, interventionists, recess aides, lunch aides, that could help work Eagle Club. Now, there are some requirements that they would have, fingerprinting requirement, background checks. But again, these are discussions that we've had, say, okay, how can we help? Continue with family tours and this, this, I gotta give Kathy Akak credit for this one. She talked about it about a year ago, as we got closer, bringing the families and students in before we move. Once, so they're comfortable with it, and our students are comfortable with it. Maybe more than once, we bring those students down to Hyatt and bring the families into the new facility. So it's not brand-new when they finally arrive. And again, communicate and continue to enroll early childhood students. Again, we've got about thirty-seven and nineteen already in the queue, thirty-seven four-year-olds, nineteen three-year-olds already enrolled through five-nine-one kids and through the school enrollment process, waiting for that May first so we can start placing. So again, I think we're off to a good start. Will that increase? I hope it does. I hope, I think we all hope it does. There are two issues that we're still gonna deal with. One is licensing. Okay, and I know Vicki kind of kick-started that probably about two weeks ago. Had quite a few meetings with, with the licensing and, and registration, Lara Group from the state of Michigan. And it is a process. It's not something that just happens overnight. They do come into the building, probably have to get the whole building licensed because we are looking using the cafeteria, we are looking using the gymnasium, the, the media center. So again, that is something we're going through right now. I don't have a timeline, sometimes they tell you five months, sometimes they tell you eight months. You know, sometimes they may tell you five weeks. So again, Vicki's done a great job of communicating with Lara, the, the regulatory agency of where we're at in the process. It is everything from chairs to transportation. So again, we're going through that. And like I said, traffic, we're not gonna solve that problem, okay? But again, as you see it through, like we're doing now, maybe we can find small solutions to help with that problem. Not just on this site, but also, you know, Hyatt, Linden. So going back to the building itself, and again, and we did try to look up, and I actually had Greg help me look up any kind of records we may have had on construction. You can see the building was built in nineteen sixteen, we had some additions, four different additions. Really, all we could find that we're aware of is in nineteen seventy-three, Media Center office in the lounge. Basically, we believe what happened is those records that were in the old administration building turned to dust, disappeared, whether they were thrown out, destroyed, I couldn't answer that. So I think the other thing, you know, ever since we started this bond process, we have talked about this transition. We have talked about moving from a, a, a building that we're currently into a very new renovated, almost rebuilt building, designed specifically for early childhood program. So again, everything from before the vote till after the vote, this has been part of our process. And again, something the board moved forward with back in two thousand nineteen, when we originally, prior to COVID, when we originally started this process. So as we talked about, we're looking at four options with that building, once we transition out. One is to sell the building as-is. And we did do a market analysis, Greg contacted American Realtors out of Fenton and Remax out of Linden. American Realtors, they estimate if there was a sale, it'd be somewhere in the two, two-hundred to four-hundred thousand dollar range. That's with the building on site. Remax of Linden, they estimated between four-hundred and five-hundred thousand, if we sold it with the building. Not to demolish the building and sell the land, it's, I don't know, more or less, I guess it's all dependent.
I think it's negative equity at that point. I think the cost of constru-, or demolition of the building, we basically just eat into the total value of what you might get just to sell it as-is. You know, the problem is the, the dimensions of the lot, and it's pie-shaped, triangular, it's real narrow on the one end. You know, you'd be limited as to what you could do as far as being able to split it. You might get three lots that you could, and it's, and it's currently zoned commercial. So, you know, what, what truly would, would go on that site? You know, somebody would have to look at rezoning or something, but there wouldn't be a lot of value in the land. I think probably that if the board makes a decision, the best decision would be to sell the building and save the demolition money that we would expend, you know, to get to that point.
We, we had option B, which is lease the building, find the right fit. Potential updates based on those arrangements that the district may be responsible for. And I think the important thing is, you know, we're, we're not in the landlord business, we're in the education business. Option C was demolish the structure and sell the property. And as Mr. Vez mentioned, we've, we've set aside about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for demolition in the bond. Will it be more than that? Will it be less? I mean, you know, after you demolish it, there's site restoration that's gotta take place, not knowing, once you start breaking that building down, with potential asbestos abatement. And you just, we did some of that tonight, of where we may be if we look to demolish the building. And, and option D was to continue to use the building. And, and again, I, I think if we look at this, I would recommend, if we're gonna do it, we make a commit and we do it right. We don't band-aid it. Because band-aiding just keeps us in the same situation, what are we gonna do next? So if we do it right, what we did is we actually took the represent, or the, the current Hyatt restoration, which is approximately two-hundred-and-ten to two-hundred-and-twenty square feet of what that's costing us right now to, to renovate that end of the north end of, north end of the building. Now, just simple math, you put that on the total square footage of, of Argentine, and again, you're gonna get between four and five million dollars, plus or minus. And a lot of that depends on, we can have somebody design it all out, engineers. And again, that does not include escalation, you didn't see a professional piece, so we would have to pay that on top of that. But if the board decided to choose that route, we could bring architects, engineers in and start identifying what those renovations look like. The unfortunate part is, very similar to the asbestos tonight, we don't know what's gonna happen when we start opening up that building. So again, that price could go way up, could go way down. And the other thing that we talked about is, you know, people say, well, geez, you don't, you, you don't have the same space because we don't have the open space like we have at Argentine, the media center. We don't have a dedicated cafeteria or a dedicated gym space like we do at Argentine. So what happens if we just get a lot of students? And we're talking, we look at kindergarten numbers, a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty students that come in. Well, number one, I'll tell you, that's a good problem. We'll find a solution, but I, I'd rather have that problem. And so one of those options, we looked at potentially adding up. Now, originally, we did get a traditional build quote in two thousand twenty-three from Barton Mallow that put the, the approximately five-point-eight million dollars to add on for classroom, that big open space, and it looked like a little bit of office space there, storage space. Now, one of the things that we have talked about in Barton Mallow is doing a non-traditional build, which isn't all brick and all mortar. It would be that traditional footing, traditional two-by-four framing. The, probably the best analogy I can give you, I don't wanna say the name, but if you look at like a kinder care facility, kind of that structure, is that the best way to explain it?
Like a, a commercial building, but not necessarily a school constructed.
If you do something in that manner, they're estimating about three-point-four million dollars for approximately just under nine thousand square feet of additional space. And again, this is just an addition, it's a, it, it is a vision, almost a plan B if we find ourselves in a position where our numbers start to drastically increase. So as of right now, and we'll have a discussion about it, but I would recommend our next steps. We continue to move forward with a plan to transition the early childhood from Argentine to Hyatt. We continue to, to market, communicate, and enroll early childhood students. We move forward to determine real-terrestrial process for option A. And again, nothing the board has to make decision tonight on with Realtors and, yes, we gotta sell, we don't. That's something more of an action-related and some other steps we'd have to go through. But also, start planning for option C as well, demolish the structure and sell the property. And again, that's just logistical planning. So we do have a plan in place, and if we get to that option C, we know what that result's gonna be. And so with that, I'll open it up for discussion.
Right. Thank you, Russ, and that was a lot of information, but I appreciate you going through it all with us as well. Because sometimes when you're just reading through it, you know, it's kind of hard to understand all of this. So thank you for presenting it to us also. What comments and questions do board members have? Mr. Annie?
Thank you for the presentation. Regarding the extended programming, what constitutes that exactly?
Yeah, so extended programming, Vicki, correct me if I'm wrong, it's gotta be five days, five full days. And it's gotta be for a minimum of a hundred-and-eighty days.
A hundred-and-eighty days. And there's some other requirements too, as far as home visits and conferences, so many days throughout the year. Basically, it's, it's run with the school cad.
And the other, the, 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 the school districts that would be compete with the most have extended, correct?
Not always, I think, it rushed up the one slide, I think there was two or three.
Yeah, Lake Fenton and Fenton are the only two in the county that have it.
And we had a five-day, actually, we had two classes and five-day this year. But we only, we didn't have a hundred-and-eighty days.
Gotcha. I think it's imperative that we compete certainly with our closest competition. That's, that's where I would lie on that. Now, does the reimbursement change at all? Are the per pupil reimbursement on the extended, if you will? So it's not?
More per student.
More per student.
Not nine thousand, but more than nine?
No, I think it's, I, I think it's the same, nine thousand.
No, I think it's, I think it's the same nine thousand additional, I, that's a good question.
No, it was, it's about, it's a, it's
I don't have it on that slide.
It's over ten thousand, it's over ten thousand.
So it's more.
So it's more, so what?
It's about fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred dollars more, I think, or something.
Yeah, you lost it, GSRP funding.
There's fifty-five more days, right? Are we, sorry, at one twenty-five, is that what you said, days right now?
Hundred. Our calendar's a hundred and twenty.
They're required to have at least a hundred and twenty, the other GSRP programs.
For our current full day at six thousand, or or nine thousand sixty-six, we're giving them a hundred and twenty days.
At least a hundred and twenty, I think it's rate around one forty-five or whatever. It's higher than that, we're giving a little bit more than what the minimum is for those other pro, the other programs, but we didn't have a hundred and eighty.
So for the additional, you said a thousand dollars, approximately ten thousand something? Was it ten thousand five hundred, or?
Um it's probably about eighteen hundred, close to eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred, so that starts with that extra sixty days, which costs money, but like I said, makes more comparisons too. I'm glad you recognized that.
Oh, absolutely, I think, once again, it's something that Mr. Murphy pounds on us a lot, is that early childhood. The importance of that early childhood, granting them early. Uh obviously, I think it's something that we're currently losing to the other districts with, so I think the priority should be there. Um regarding Argentine, um I would think eventually with the shrinking enrollments, we would need less square footage, that's just my basic layperson train of thought, so I think I would definitely lie with selling building as is, it just makes no sense to me, so. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hany, other comments or questions? Ms. Ramberg?
Um I have a question, so we still have two years on that building before it's changed, for the tax purposes, right?
I'm sorry?
For the building, for Argentine Elementary, we have like a two, wasn't it two years before the tax status changes, if we were to keep the building for another year?
Not tax status, but if we don't occupy the building for twenty-four months, then we could, in order to reoccupy it as a school facility, we would have to bring it up to today's code. We did this with clarification yesterday, uh it's much more significant than probably what we even thought. It's fu, full fire suppression in the building now. Uh any construction in Michigan for schools that exceeds twelve thousand square feet has to be fully sprinkled. So you're talking a significant amount of money to go, and you would literally be gutting that building and rebuilding all the restrooms to make sure everything's ADA compatible, uh you know, so I think the plan would have to be, you continue to utilize the building, uh or have something in place before that two-year period is up, so you don't get trapped.
Okay, and then um do we have any other property as a school district, if we did need another facility? Do we have a large parcel of property in the future?
Yes, we have a hundred plus acres just to the south here, all that farm land.
So if we develop, we can use that?
And you drive through the middle school, yes.
Yeah.
Is that in our lease agreement, that we could break that lease for that purpose?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's a great question, because I just, I don't know if I did the math right, if I take the low bid around two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars for that property, if I'm looking at, if I did the math correctly, it's about nineteen dollars square foot is what we would be selling that for. I think that's kind of low, um so I I know, I know I have time to think about it, I just I'm like, two hundred people in this community, who put a thousand dollars into that building, buy it, and then do what they wanted with it, that's something else, like maybe turn it into a a senior center for a group of seniors, I I see them popping up everywhere, and I think it might be cool for the people who grew up here, if they, it's kinda like they began there, and they could, that would be their final golden years too, keeping, keeping within the areas and removing them far away from their families, so I I would hate to rush uh to try to build something new, and it it may not need to be done.
Mr. Ramberg?
Okay, here we go. Um so many critical concerns about this process, you know, and it just, so so numerous to mention. But I wanna start with the uh the numbers thing, with the um the slots and all that stuff. As I was discussing with Mr. Selsky today, the how the slots are determined, um one thing that is a point, will point to, Jancy County submits its request, and then the state compares this with the data on the eligible, number of eligible four-year-olds in our area. In our area, does that mean in Linden, or does that mean in Jancy County? Not quite sure on that, we didn't come to an agreement on that.
I told you Jancy County birth rates.
We were thinking Jancy County.
I told you, I present that every year, you guys.
Yeah, and the the interesting point is that comes from census data. So we've been led to believe all along, we have no opportunity to find out how many kids are out there, and I couldn't believe we didn't think about the census.
You have not been led to believe.
Well, we've talked about how can we get, we've never been able to get.
The proper information, because everybody that's been on this board for the last eight years, some of you, Taffo's the only one in in Katy, that had not gone through the presentation, uh the population presentation, we talk about birth rates, and I get that information from the county.
Birth rates don't transfer into the identical, absolute census data. We spend a lot of money in this country, getting a census out there, to find out who lives where, and how many people in there. And yet, we seem to wanna not consider that as a source of information.
Well, we must not be the only ones, well, twenty-one other districts in the county that probably dealing with the same thing we are seeing.
Then I wanna be better than them, okay?
Well, I do too, we could move on, we've said that for many years.
But I'm just saying is, I think the census is a tool that we need to explore as far as trying to get a better handle about what the future looks like for this district. Is it a hundred and fifty kindergarteners a year, or is it less, more? I mean, I see all these beautiful houses being built in the district. I gotta believe there's gonna be a few kids in them someday, and maybe they are, but are they not coming here? That's the point we gotta also find out, you know? And that's why I harp on, you know, I've had numerous discussions, Mr. Selsky, about how we can better identify where these kids are at. And I I I appreciate his survey that came out, it did give us a lot of information, but unfortunately, it was a five percent turnout on survey. And to me, that's not statistically significant, okay? So my, again, my plea is for us to reach out to our K three staff buildings, and have them talk to those parents, those kids, and say, do you have more kids coming down the pipeline? Do you know of other kids, that are friends of your kids, that are coming down the pipeline? That might not fit in that K three mark? I just feel it's super important that we do the best job of identifying how many kids are out there, so that we can do the best job of identifying how we wanna allocate our resources in the near future to meet the needs in the best possible way for those kids. So I I really feel we need to go back to the drawing board. Unfortunately, time is clicking, you know? This whole thing about the May first thing, the whole thing about requesting slots, you know, we look at the slot numbers, and it's very disappointing to see how many we get relative to some other schools. Fenton, Lake Fenton, Curzly, I can't believe Curzly, they're nothing, look at that, it's a hundred and twelve. Now, Curzly's not as big a school as us, yet they've got a hundred and twelve kids in full-day programs, not not partial day, full day. So I just feel like, we're not doing a very good job of getting our fair share of this money. And that's why I think we need to refocus our efforts. And now that we know more about what triggers, uh but but the bottom line is, one of the things is the county's request for how many slots they ask for from the state is what? Based on previous allocations. Individual district request, that's us requesting, we want a hundred and twelve, we want a hundred and thirty. We're not asking for that right now, we're asking for, we didn't even start with eighty-four that we ended up with this year. We started with less than that, and Aaron Bradley actually was able to bring in a couple more uh groups of allotments, of slots, to make the eighty-four number happen. You know, and I have a grandson that was fortunate enough to get involved in that program midway through this winter, and he loves it, it's great, and I got the opportunity to go there, go inside the building, see this app. It's great. You know, it's not a broken building, like we keep getting like harped on, like, oh, this is just not good enough for our kids, that's almost the impression I get, like we have to spend all this money. All this money, we're gonna spend, based on what? An estimate. We don't have any specifics about what needs to be done, Mr. Ramberg's asked about that, what is really wrong with that building? No answer, just general things, well, this and that. And then you take the funding cost to repair it, where do you get that from? A building that you had to move walls, blow holes in walls, make windows, all this, I don't think that's what we're talking about for Argentine, when we talk about enhancing that building. You know, I think it's largely dealing with the west end of the building, west of the office, classrooms that I don't think are even being utilized right now for 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 this. Um and the cafeteria, obviously, that's the oldest part of that building. And so there's where you're gonna look at spending some money, dealing with that, to make it a better source. So um the, like I said, I mentioned the survey, five percent success rate, provided some good information, but not enough to be statistically significant. Um I think it speaks to, you know, your opportunity to grow our district, our kindergarten classroom. It's so important to get the kids in kindergarten and before kindergarten into our district, because once they're in the mix, they'll stay with you, especially when they find out how good it is. You know, I know kindergarten teachers, like I said, I've had a chance to see some of these preschool teachers. It's just a great program, it's a great building. The idea that, oh, it's two separate drop-offs, well, you know what, it works pretty good. My daughter drops my four-year-old grandson off, eight fifteen, drives down to Hyatt, drops off the other one before he needs to be there at eight thirty, perfect. It's not a problem, even if you do have two kids in two different buildings, okay? They're relatively close, they're not that far apart. It spreads our footprint in the district. You know, if we get rid of Argentine, everything is 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 this complex and east. Rest of the district, it's like, ah, who are you out there, we don't really know. No, they're important too. And so I think just keeping that presence out there, until we're sure that we no longer need that space, and we're not there yet, because we don't know whether we can grow our four-year-old program. We have to know for sure that that's not gonna happen. And so once we know that, then we can move a little bit differently, but it's a great program, I think it's something we should be pushing, and we have to educate, this is not something you educate people with an email. You have to talk to them personally about this, and show them, and tell them about all the great things that their kid is gonna get experience. So, you know, I I'm just so frustrated that we seem to be in such a hurry to make these decisions before we have all the answers to all of our questions. And again, I will not give up on the building of Argentine, based on these estimates that we've been given, because they're just not accurate, in my opinion, repair accurate, they're just not accurate. So, my opinion, we stay the course at Argentine for another year. We find out if we can right the ship on this four-year-old environment. We try to get to the census data to try and find out how many kids are really out there, and where they're at. And if we can find that, we can start reaching out to those kids, and get with them before they go elsewhere. Well, I've heard that program over there is pretty good, and that one's over there. I'm just gonna go over there, because you know, Linden's just kinda not, not reaching out to us. So um this is a tragedy if we let this fall without a little more pointed effort in this area. So again, I'm not in favor of moving forward with uh we, that space that we've created down Hyatt will be great for whatever we turn out to use it for. And it might be more kindergarten classrooms down the road, that's where it might fall to, if we need more space. I'd love to have space that's already paid for, not have to go building, and spend an incredible amount of money that we've seen, anywhere from three and a half million to six, six million, you know, to get it done. And to give away a building like that, is, that price is shockingly low, in my opinion, like Mrs. Ramberg said. You know, the low estimate, I think, I mean, I don't think you'd have to settle for that, but even five or six hundred thousand dollars, for that much acreage, on a, on a small lake like that, that doesn't make a lot of sense, in my opinion. And a parking lot that's not more than eight, ten years old, that we spent a hundred and eighty thousand dollars on when we put it in? You know, that stuff all gotta be considered, when we start talking about just evacuating from a process. So, I'm sorry, sorry to run on, but there's a lot of issues here that I just hope my fellow board members will take into consideration that moving forward too quickly is not a good idea on this issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Murphy. Um
I was just gonna say, I didn't mean to cause a bunch of, uh I guess, too much talk about it, but I tend to add, I'm just to one of his points of the um the marketing, I I was able to talk to a couple of parents, and they, they're from around, actually, one was from Holly last time I talked to, and she was looking for our, well, my my opinion on where she should send her two kids to to a program. I was trying to kinda upsell our program, it went into really awesome, but she's gonna send hers to Joy of Wonder, and I said, what's your plan after the Joy of Wonder? And she wanted to take them to Lake Fenton afterwards. And I know another family that's putting their kids in Joy of Wonder, and they're taking their kids to Lake Fenton once the kindergarten enrollment um is happening, so I, there's two different families, at least the people didn't know each other, it's kind of talking up a conversation. And it's, what, why are they wanting to go to the Fenton's uh Joy of Wonder program, and then go to Lake Fenton afterwards? So I think we might have a marketing issue on our hands, because it seems like word of mouth, like Fenton's the place you go to put your kids in this GSRP, and then send them to Lake Fenton. That's just some of the conversations I've had in the last six months, so I can kinda see where he's upset with marketing. But I don't think it was even a bad thing, I just think it's a a new program, and we have to maybe think about how we're marketing and stuff.
Yeah, I guess my quick response to that would be, if they're from Holly, it's probably just a location thing, you know, that's closer to them. But um I got, I, Mr. Mindy, I don't know, do you wanna say something?
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so my my take on the whole thing, I said last time I spoke that, you know, obviously, you have a lot of passion for, you know, Miss Cathy's here, and and all of the history that we have with Argentine, so I don't wanna lose sight of that, a lot of us feel really have a big connection to that, because, you know, a lot of our kids have gone through there, and grandkids and whatnot, so. But I do think that, it was communicated that this was gonna be the plan, the room that early childhood center from the beginning, so a lot of people that that, and I don't think we're debating that, I don't believe, I think what the argument is, is whether or not we need to keep Argentine open in case we get this flood of kids. I've I've been convinced enough by the data from the survey, and the birth rate data that we've seen, that we have a pretty good idea of what's out there, and we're not gonna need that room anytime soon, unless there is this big flood of kids, and then, to me, it just becomes kind of a a math equation where you are going to have to spend the estimates of the five million dollars, four, four and a half, five million dollars to upgrade Argentine. I mean, we just approved two hundred K for just asbestos in, you know, relatively new building. When you talk about bringing buildings up to code, there's a lot of money that gets spent in that, so when you're talking about roughly that amount of money for for a, you know, ground-up school build for the extension, if we, to Hyatt, if we came to the point in the future that we did need that, that would be a great problem to have, and now I like that we have another estimate for even a a smaller amount, the three million dollars, three point four, whatever, to to build a different version of that, so. I I think that we have the the plans to adjust if we do have that groundswell of kids that might come from somewhere, but you know, one of the things that I haven't talked about, I mentioned to Mr. Selsky, I, part of this is an engagement issue, and I I appreciate Mr. Murphy's passion for trying to reach the kids and being competitive, and you know, even Ms. Ramberg talked about the the marketing, but you know, part of this is is parents and people in the community have to be engaged, and I've I've been talking about, I've now got, I think we're gonna end up having four kids in GISD uh next year, which I think is an awesome program, but guess what, to get them there, like, you gotta go to the meeting, and you gotta meet this due date to get the form in, and then you gotta do the tour, and then you, I mean, if if to get kids involved in these programs, you gotta have engaged parents, and you know, maybe, maybe some of them aren't engaged enough to really follow through with the whole thing, and that's why you have five percent response rates on emails, and four late clicks on the district Facebook page, I mean, I'm just not convinced that there's gonna be this huge groundswell of people that we're not already trying to find, that are gonna come, you know, create this huge need to fill Argentine in addition to the new early childhood center we're building at Hyatt, so. Um so I would be in favor of not kicking the can down the road, continuing down the road, and working with the Realtors to potentially sell the building. I look at old office buildings that are always on Zillow, and you know, the the, you know, two to five hundred thousand mark is not, is not unique for, you know, a a building that is, you know, potentially, they're gonna have to either renovate it, or tear it down themselves, and put something else there, and yeah, you know, if somebody wants to buy it, let's be put money together, and make it, you know, I mean, that'd be cool, yeah, but I mean, I don't think it it needs to be our problem, if you think about some of the history of what businesses have, you know, not worked in in Argentine, you know, McDonald's did make a gas station in Argentine, and just, the restaurant didn't make it there, I just saw that that coin laundry just shut down. So everything seems to be moving towards the downtown area, you got those two new subdivisions that are being built off of Linden Road by Newers, and then the one, you know, north of town, over there on the, on the uh east side. And so I love the idea of kind of helping to direct all that kind of new energy that's coming into downtown Linden, and and I I think that this is a good part of that, where you do have the the possibility of kids being able, or parents being able to take their kids into that central area for students or families that have, you know, one, two, three young ones in the district, and not have to go to multiple buildings. So I I think everything's positive to move things in that direction, and I would be really sad to see Argentine go, but that's kinda what the voters voted on, in in their understanding, when they cast their vote and approved, we had the privilege of getting this bond passed, and um you know, I I just don't see the need to kinda wait another year to see what happens, I think we need to make a decision now, while it's on. I think we need to make a decision now while it's on the table and, and, uh, move forward, so that's what you said, thanks.
Alright, you know, this end of the table? Um, I was trying to get.
Howard, regarding slots, to his point, we're not gonna collect slots just to hold on to slots, correct?
Correct.
No, we're granting them based on who applies.
Well, like, for example, we're, we're going in with eighty-four slots and I think in our last presentation, we hadn't even used all of those. And so, um, we can ask for more slots, I couldn't even tell you.
So do we have identified the need prior to requesting slots?
Yeah, that's what should be happening, it's not happening. What you said, we identified the need, but slots are usually requested sometime between now and, go ahead.
I can tell you, so I have to request slots on the twenty-eighth of this month, they're requested, and they're based on the first grade enrollments. That's our initial slot, if we need more, I can request more, but to my knowledge right now, I think we have six or seven that we didn't even use from last year. If we don't use them, we have to give them back by December, there's a cutoff in December. I'm doing my best estimate, too, based on what I know as far as enrollment. We're gonna look at our third graders right now that have not enrolled and reach out to them and make sure they get enrolled. But I'm not near that number right now for enrollment, so I would just go with what they're recommending for my, my estimates on the twenty-eighth.
And these are slots that are given, we don't know that these slots are used.
That is correct.
And I'm, I say this with a lot of respect for my friends in Flint, I work in Flint, I love Flint. But Flint Community Schools is probably not doing a better job than us marketing a hundred and forty full day slots. I would guess, so, I mean, we also have to remember that these are what's been granted, this is not necessarily what's being built. So, you know, just to see that out there doesn't mean that they're using this.
That is correct.
Um, you know, the other thing, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Monica just said, um, I mean, birth rates, we can't control that. Options we can't control, there are so many options for parents now, so many options. From in-home options to online options, to school of choice, take your kid wherever you want to go regardless of where you live options. That makes it really hard, you know, we can have, we can find ten new people, you know, that live within a mile of, of this building to have a four-year-old. And they might be taking them to Fenton or Schwartz Creek or somewhere else, cause they work in those communities. And it just makes it easier for them to drop their kiddo off there as opposed to staying in Linden. So, there are a lot of things that I think that go into that, and though I do appreciate Mr. Murphy's passion for this, and I think we would all love it. If we could, like, bring out that crystal ball and, and figure this out completely, I just don't think, um, it's, that's completely feasible. I think because of so many options and there are less kids, I mean, we are lucky, we have some new subdivisions coming in, as, as already been mentioned. So surely that will bring some new folks to our community, which is great, um, for our school and for our future enrollment. But, um, I also agree, you know, what I had, I, I think the bigger issue than the four-year-old enrollment's gonna be Eagle Club. But that will be, we can talk about that later, I mean, if you look at how those numbers have already exploded, wait till they're all on the same campus. I can tell you that's the only reason my kids did do Eagle Club in elementary was because it just seemed less convenient. And even then, it wasn't really less convenient, they could have been bus there, I just made it less convenient in my mind and I didn't do it. But had they been right at their shape school, I can guarantee they would have done it. And so that's, I think is probably gonna be our bigger concern moving forward initially. Um, but as Mr. Monica mentioned, cause it, you know, this was on my mind too, I mean, we, we already discussed this, this had been voted on by our taxpayers. Um, you know, we, I, I'm a little confused, actually, one thing I want, I'd like to request, like, moving forward on these discussions is to separate the conversation on early childhood center at Argentine. Cause I think we're getting a little bit mashed together in this discussion, which, you know, it, it is all in one right now. But like our early childhood is, is going to be at Hyatt starting in August. And then we've got the separate thing of like Argentine, and what can we do with that? So, I think we need to separate those conversations, cause the one is happening, it's moving, and that's what we already decided. Um, the other thing needs to happen as well, we just need to decide what's the best move based on what, you know, offers we get and things. And I agree with what Mr. Haney and Mr. Monica already said, and I've talked to Mr. Siselski about this, you know? If someone comes in and wants to buy that, you know, and they give us a reasonable offer for what it's worth, it seems like that's gonna be the best move for the district. Otherwise, it's gonna be a money pit that we're not gonna use, and that's not good for the district, that's not, I mean, I understand it. Mr. Monica, I can put it best at the last meeting you mentioned it again, I understand as well that there's an emotional connection to the community and to that space. I mean, a lot of people that have lived here, you know, that are, you know, middle aged, older than even, like, I think my grandparents, you know, went to school there. So I understand like the emotional connection, but also, you know, building codes, health codes, regulations, we have to meet all that. We can't just decide ourselves that it's good enough for our three-year-olds to be, you know, we have to meet laws. So, I, I, I just don't see us sinking a bunch of money into a space that we're not gonna need, especially when the decision's already been made to move early childhood to that downtown campus. Um, I personally think, and, and, you know, this is obviously for a conversation well down the road as well, that Mr. Siselski and I talked about this. You know, and, and maybe I'm wrong, but I feel like there is still a little bit of wiggle room space-wise at those two elementary buildings down, you know, at Linden and at Hyatt. So if we needed to maneuver something down the road, if you look at, you know, putting all of one grade in one building versus having them split or something, and that could create space as well. Everyone's gonna be down there anyway, so, um, anyway, I, I'm kinda just rambling now. But I, I guess I'm just a little confused because I'm, you know, some of this has already been decided and now we're like circling back as if we're making a different decision. And I understand, you know, everybody's got their own opinions and it's, it's welcome to them. Um, but I think moving forward, I'd really like to see us have, separate these conversations, um, personally.
But you can't, because they are intertwined right now. You need the space that Argentine prevent, presents if you want to grow the program. The problem is, back in December, I started raising this concern to Mr. Siselski, like, hey, I heard it was free for all. Not free for only the poor people, the, the poorer people. Well, so then, you know, it's just been, it's been dragging on for three or four months. And now guess what, we're down to like two weeks before we get to request more slots.
Well, I'd like to just.
We're not, we're not gonna request more slots because we don't have the information that we need to say, we have these many kids that wanna get in this program. If we just, no, because we haven't done the whole one people enroll.
Mr. Murphy, I'd like to just say, I, I was kinda speaking, and I know you wanted to say something to what I was saying, but.
Okay, I thought you were done, I'm sorry, I thought you were done, I thought you were done.
That's okay, I, and, and I understand this is a very sensitive topic, um, and, and I wanna be respectful of everyone. Um, but also, you know, we do have the space that we need, regardless if we need eighty-four or a hundred and forty. We will have that space in our new early childhood center for now. Now, our question would be two years from now, three years from now, and I understand what you're saying, you brought it to Mr. Siselski in December. If I'm recalling correctly, we discussed this as a board like two years ago, because Mr. Vadas brought a couple different site plans to us about potentially even expanding that space further to four or six more classrooms. Because we were already wondering with the governor's plan for pre, for year old preschool for everyone, not just for the poor, for everyone, that this could explode our program. So we've been talking about this for much more than just a few months.
We haven't been doing any of that, we're gonna do a lot of talking, I get it, man. We've been doing a lot of talking.
Um, so, you know, you also don't need the space until you need the space, so.
We're never gonna need the space if we keep our current approach of trying to market this district. That's what I'm saying.
Well, our school of choice numbers, if you remember just from a recent presentation, um, continue to go up even though the number.
You mean to lose, you mean, to other districts?
No, no, we are, we continue to get more school of choice students every year, even though birth rates are down. To me, that's a great statistic, that shows me there's fewer students in our area to choose from, and more of them are coming to Linden. And we've talked about this during recent presentations, so.
Right, so we pilfered students from other districts that can't afford to lose students, just to try and keep our numbers at that. Because we're still losing students to other districts.
Well, what you just said is completely opposite of what you also said, well, I need to market ourselves better, cause we're certainly not pilfering students from anywhere, they're choosing to come here. So, anyway, we, we're getting off topic.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, my comments are completed, I think I've made clear where I stand with this. Uh, Mrs. Odell, Mrs. Hanson, do you have anything to add at this point, Mrs. Odell?
Sorry, I just, I guess I'm gonna kind of round back to the slots, cause that seems to be a big thing. I wanna make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So the county makes the request for the slots.
To the state.
To the state.
Yes, ma'am.
Not us.
No. They, they have.
They ask it based upon our first grade numbers.
No.
Is that correct?
The county, the county looks at, oh, shoot, that was a wrong way.
Sorry, I guess I'm kinda leaning, I don't know if the slide is.
So the county submits a request to the state based on current slots.
Yes.
Like, when, when they submit to the state, and I don't know that timeline, but they'll submit based on what we use for twenty-four, twenty-five, all of the county. Uh, they'll look at their census data, their population, birth rates, uh, poverty lines, excuse me, family poverty levels. Uh, they'll look at first grade numbers even at their level across the county. Uh, and again, that, there is that whole harmless, so we're gonna get, I would assume as a county, um, almost three, thirteen-hundred-ish slots for school use.
So part of this is done at a county level, level.
Correct.
Prior to us.
We, we, I, correct. Work providing them, is, if you go back that slide, Mr. Siselski. I think where you, I think, uh. Go back that slide. I think where you're going. Right there, county's request based on previous allocations to us, individual district request from us.
Yes, but it also.
First grade, it's based on the first grade numbers of poverty, fam, the level of family poverty, four hundred percent.
Yes.
Of that group of, which to me is like, how does that predicate back for four-year-olds, three-year-olds, two-year-olds? I don't know, it doesn't seem to really translate. Just because you've had first grade poverty, doesn't mean you don't have more or less three, four-year-olds that are experiencing a poverty situation of, of that level.
Well, I think to that point, you were asking about, sorry, it's, it's hard. Um, you know, you were asking about families, do you have more children? I think that is part of the assumption, is that potentially there are more children. So if you're seeing a poverty level at that level, you're potentially seeing it at a younger level.
But it could be, at their, the, the first grade could be their last kid in the family, not their first. It's, it's not really relevant, it's, it's just a, a skill that they throw out there, just trying. It's gotta be relevant.
It's just purely, because I keep turning my, my head, I, Mr. Murphy, if I could just ask you respectfully to let Mrs. Odell finish her thought? And then, and then you can.
We could probably talk without the.
So, but, I mean, if we're not able to fill all of our slots that we have this year, we have empty slots already. The county is not going to immediately say, well, you can have more because we're requesting them, is my understanding. Or, sorry, we, we can't have more upfront, because they're gonna base it off of what we were able to fill this year.
At least what we were able to fill, correct?
So us, us kinda saying, but we're planning for the future, it's kinda dribble, it's a non-starter at this point.
And even to the point, if we had a thousand kids that we knew, we're not getting a thousand slots.
Yeah.
But if we had a hundred and ten that we knew, we might get that, because we do prove.
And I wanted to say too, I mean, in thinking on why are some families not utilizing our four-year-old program or our three-year-old program? For some, because we don't have that infancy program, I know for a lot of families, it's the consistency for a young child. For a lot of families, it's potentially, we started them from birth, and it's the consistency up until they start kindergarten, it's a good breaking point. And it's a hard breaking point, so I think that's something to keep in mind as well, as to, it's a potential as just to why are, is that not being pursued in some ways?
But I think if you looked at the slide, talked about the most important factor, cost was the most important factor. When it becomes free, then it's a whole lot more interesting, trust.
There is, but I also know that it's, there are multiple components when you're talking about parents with their young kiddos, so.
Alright, any other comments?
No, bottom line is, the, the costs that we're talking about are not substantiated to, to upgrade Argentine in my opinion. The fact of the matter is, we haven't done a good job in the last three or four months to really push forward to find out how many kids we could get interested in a quality four-year-old program. Yeah, I think it's gaining ground traction right now, you know, we had a new director come in that was really not too familiar with the business, just kinda put in place as a newbie. They always have growing pains, you know? Currently, we're planning with Mrs. Matt Ravich to be more seasoned veteran person of the industry. So, you would hope she would have more success than Erin did in, in as far as attracting kids. The bottom line is, do we want to see our kindergarten classrooms continue to drop? And this will impact the whole district eventually, cause we have a lot of fixed costs to run this district. And it's all based on ten thousand per kid, and if there's less kids, that ten thousand number adds up to less money when there's less kids. And that, that percentage, the fixed cost goes up. And you wanna take that down, and the only way you do that is by growing the size of the district. At least getting it back to where it was, you know, eight, ten years ago, where we were closer to three thousand, and we were closer to getting, seemed like we were heading towards.
Citywide district is where they were.
So, I, I, I mean, I work at a university, colleges are dominate, like.
For good reason, cause they're too expensive.
Birth rates are down, you can't just spawn four-year-olds, like you can't.
Look at, look at the percentage, look at the percent of our old and college education.
Alright, um, alright, I'm gonna kinda put an end to this discussion, the last thing.
It's ridiculous.
Last thing, I, I kinda just wanna, I guess.
Sixty percent inflation, four hundred percent in the cost.
I wanna push back just for a second on one comment that Mr. Murphy made, just in, in your opinion, which is your title too, about the cost of upgrading Argentine and how you think it's not accurate. Um, I guess I would just like to acknowledge Mr. Vadas and his team that have put a lot of work into looking into what the cost would be. And I trust what they're bringing to us, um, as a professional in that field, um, you know, cause I might not think it should cost that much either, but like, that's not my job. So, um, thank you for those of you that are working hard on making sure that we do have accurate information, um, to make these decisions.
You'll admit it, it's just an estimate.
And it'd probably be way more than that, cause every estimate usually is way more than what we expect, so. Um, alright, I think we've probably had enough discussion on this for this evening, um, as we have all had a chance to say something. And, um, we can agree to disagree on certain items, so thank you, Mr. Siselski, for bringing that back to us. Um, and we do not have a closed session this evening, so with that, at seven forty-five, we'll be adjourned.